We're going to call this meeting ordered at this time. I want to thank everybody for coming out. This time, we're going to ask Commissioner Phillips to do the invocation and pledge.
Thank you Lord in heaven for this. Thank you for all of our meetings. Thank you for all of the earth responders, Lord. Thank you for all of the military.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America is a republic for which it stands, a nation under God and invisible thirteen persons.
David, do we have any additions or deletions to the meeting?
Yes, we do, sir. We have a deletion on the consent agenda of item number one because it is a duplicate of item number eighteen. Then we have three additions we'd like to add. First one being the Leary Firefighters Foundation grant. That came to us yesterday and it has to be signed by December thirtieth, so that's why we have to rush it onto the agenda. We have emergency storm expenses or costs for preparation for this weekend's emergency storms. And then we have emergency repair at the well at South Side. It needs to be voted on so that the check can be released to the vendor.
Okay, who's going to do the well at South Side? You or?
I'll do the well at South Side and the firefighter grant. And Mr. Kirby will do the emergency storm preparations and expenses.
So we'll add the emergency storm expenses to Mr. Kirby's when he's up, and then we'll add the other two to the bottom of yours.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I get a... Do commissioners have any additions they want to add or delete? Okay, can I get a...
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like what? All right. David, do we have a proclamation tonight?
We do not.
I didn't think we had any. I've seen it on here. Okay, we're going to do a public hearing at this time. Connie Brishin, would you like to come up?
I'm here tonight to present a request from Daniel Craps, the agent being James Smith from North Florida Professional Services for a final plat approval for Wind Swept Industrial Subdivision, unit number seven.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time. If anybody has anything to say for or against this project. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing. I think... Robbie's district? Robbie's your district?
I'll make a motion to accept SDO two zero zero. That's what's in it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
No.
Any opposed like what?
Moving to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Okay, Mr. Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A little bit of an unusual item this evening, a release and satisfaction with Mayo Fertilizer Incorporated. Some members of the board may recall, Project seventeen eight with Mayo Fertilizer from many years ago involved selling some county-owned property to Mayo that they would subsequently barter for expansion on their project out on Ninety East. As part of that agreement in seventeen eight, there was a right of first refusal extended to Millennium Building Systems, New Millennium Building Systems, to purchase a strip of surplus properties, about six and a half acres, that Mayo at the time wasn't interested in, and neither was New Millennium, but it was nevertheless a residual strip. The situation with Mayo changed a few times. There were a couple of extensions afforded by the board that linked them the agreement, and then the pandemic came through. And by the time all the dust settled, Mayo did not want to purchase the six and a half acres, but New Millennium did. And so we negotiated and had signed a release and satisfaction with Mayo reflecting that they no longer had interest in purchasing the property to therefore open the door for New Millennium to consummate the purchase. And so what we're asking for is approval of the release and satisfaction and authorization to sell this six and a half acre tract to New Millennium at the price of fifteen thousand an acre or ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kirby?
Working so hard, can't remember his glasses.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have seven items for your consideration, including the addition. Okay. The first item was North Florida Fence Company. It was awarded in January of twenty twenty-two. The bid allows for annual renewals for up to four years, provides for a one-year extension at the same unit prices. Chairman, I'm requesting a motion to approve annual one-year extension for North Florida Fence contract, taken January twenty twenty twenty-three.
Make motion to accept bid number twenty twenty-two dash F.
Check.
I'm sorry. Well, it's not F. I apologize. He switched it real quick up in there. Twenty twenty-two dash B.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign?
Okay. Next is bid number twenty twenty-two F for corrugated pipe metal culverts. Once again, provides for a one-year extension at same prices, requesting a motion to approve a one-year extension of the contract with metal culverts.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Is Kevin or Z standing behind the same price?
Yes, sir.
They had by all of time. No, they haven't changed it since when the material went all up.
This current contract was rebid, but no, sir, they've not adjusted the prices on this contract correctly.
I just was curious. I didn't know that.
Yes, sir.
That's good. We can get it at the same price we got it last year.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Like sign?
Okay. The next item is leasing for motorators for two hundred three six forty-nine, two hundred three thousand dollars. Lease for four John Deere will expire in July and August of this upcoming year. Based on lead time with everything else, we're requesting go ahead and move forward now with the five-year lease of the four Caterpillar motorators. We're requesting an approval motion for approved the five-year lease from Ring Power Ring Investment for Cat one twenty motorators.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I will say the motor graders is very important to my district.
Yeah, it's very important to mine, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So the next is the time of the year to submit for scrap, SCOP, SIGP, and TAP. This is our FDOT grant-funded projects. We are recommending the following for submission: Southwest Arlington Boulevard, Northeast Gum Swamp Road, County Road Eighteen, and Bascom Norris Drive Sidewalk. Arlington and Gum Swamp were previously submitted for funding, but were not chosen. What we call Country Club Road or County Road one thirty-three will be adopted after July twenty-three of this upcoming year, fiscal year twenty-six, an amount of four million dollars. If the above-mentioned projects are chosen, this will conclude all resurfacing projects that have been submitted in the past decades. We're not really capturing what we shot for in the last decade. If these two make the grade, then we're starting over with Eighteen basically. I am requesting a motion to approve submission of FDOT for scrap, SCOP, SIGP, and TAP funding of the projects of CR two fifty or Gum Swamp, Arlington Road, County Road Eighteen, and Bascom Norris Sidewalk.
Got a question, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Oh, a couple of years back, we had asked for the sidewalk to be extended on Bassett and Norris from where it stopped round to one hundred, round to US Ninety. Where is that?
Yes, sir. That's the one I'm referring to on Bascom Norris Sidewalk. This piece, Commissioner Williams, goes basically Granger Lumber Company over to Washington Street. That's this piece.
From Granger Mill Road to from the street where it ends now?
Yes, sir. I can show you a picture of it. See that, Commissioner?
And where... My question is, are we going to join where the sidewalk is now?
Yes, sir.
And take it round to Granger Mill Road?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the next one is the grant agreement for design, construction, and CEI for the roadway reconstruction on Dort Street from US twenty-seven to Southwest Stillman Avenue in the town of Full White. This is the situation where we should we fund it and get reimbursement, DOT. We've been able to tell Full White many times like this. I'm requesting a motion to approve and execute reimbursement agreement and resolution twenty twenty-two R seventy-one for the reconstruction of Dort Street in Full White.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next is a little complicated, so if I go to outrunning us, back in twenty twenty-one, this board approved a partnership agreement with FDOT as it relates to improvements at the intersection of two forty-seven and Bassett. At time, I talked with this board, we funded one point six five million dollars, or fifty percent of the cost of the said intersection. Just for everybody's knowledge, back then, before all the prices inflated, they were going to do a lot of work on basically the bridge at seventy-five, back to the bowling alley, a lot of big improvements, widening, et cetera, never going to capture our project at the same time. At the end of the day, we agreed to fund two million dollars for five hundred thousand dollar annual installments. We have done that two years in a row, and we got a million dollars in the kitty. FDOT's come back to us and said, okay, we have a problem because of all these inflated prices. Keep in mind, that three hundred fifty thousand dollars on top of the one point six five put us in position to resurface Bassett Norris in the failing area, Brantford Highway to Sisters Welcome. At the time, we talked about that, that was the number. FDOT's come back to us and said, let's try this. If you will fund two point five million dollars instead of one point six five, we already committed to two million to capture our side thing, too, you'll commit to two point five million dollars into totality. That will put us in position to do some major improvements in telegraph. While I start with all the details, but I guess I'm going at it backwards. Think of it like this. Between the two locations for a two point five million dollar investment on our side, we'll get in excess of thirty million dollars worth of improvements between the two of them.
I mean, how can you?
Well, I figured I would just start with it there, and it would go. Okay. Once again, we talked about where we're at. We agreed at half the cost, one point six five. We talked about the payment. At the time, we talked about the five hundred thousand. We talked about the inflation of cost. They're short a million. They want us to do two point five. So I am recommending the annual contribution of five hundred thousand. All you got to do is extend it for another year to get you two point five. This will eliminate traditional funding for the miller resurfacing of Bassett Norris, Sisters Welcome. However, our project development manager has located potential funding through a legislative appropriation grant that will be approved or not be approved. We'll know the answer in May of twenty-three. Capture the one point three million dollar estimate, go all the way from Brantford Highway to SR forty-seven. Okay? Got a lot of options. In May of twenty-three, that might solve that problem. And Lou, they have located funding for the intersection improvements and truck expansion at two thirty-eight and forty-one. They include a signalized intersection at two thirty-eight and forty-one, turn lanes, truck parking lot with ninety-four truck parking spots, twelve car parking, four handicap service road that will run parallel between the new parking lot and the Love's traffic stop, five-foot sidewalk that connects the new parking lot to Love's. This is what she'll look like, okay? There's one point two five million dollars in the kitty right now. If this board goes forward tonight, they will start on that next year while the engineering designing. At the end of the day, once again, extend the five hundred thousand dollar commitment, do the legislative appropriation grant, hope we'll get that in May of twenty twenty-three. If we don't, we'll have to revisit it. I'm requesting a motion to approve to extend the five hundred thousand dollars annual contribution for one additional year, permission to apply for the legislative appropriation funding in the amount of one point two three seven five hundred, and enter a partnership with FDOT for the improvements at twenty-one and two thirty-eight. Mr. Chairman, the only caveat, they're going to do it all down there south of Town Forest. At the end of the day, we're going to have the O and M on it. We're going to own it. There is a cost after it's constructed.
We're going to have to say it again.
Once the construction is complete of everything I just said, it will be our ownership at that point. That is the only other cost impact. It'll be...
So the main is not be on us.
Yeah, I got you. Kevin on to one three for the Bassett Norris deal there. Is that number taken into consideration, the thirty-three percent increase we've had recently?
Yes, sir. That's a brand-new vessel. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to... I just going to talk a little bit here about the down at Ellisville. Did you tell me that included a traffic light?
Yes, sir. That is a signalized intersection at two thirty-eight forty-four.
You've ever been in Ellisville and had any dealings with the truck? Oh, you have. They're really trying to just bully the road, so to speak. So if we had a red light and have all this parking, would take... What they're doing, they're trying to take a lot of the parking on the interstate at the rest areas. They're trying to take all of that access parking and put it in this parking lot for a safety hazard out on the interstate. So I think that's really worthwhile if we can get that. Help us out a whole lot.
Mr. Phillips, you're exactly right. It was perfect timing. FDOT has identified this grant through the need of truck parking, but as luck would have it, there's also a huge safety concern. Everybody knows complaints, issues we have at the intersection, so it's a dual purpose job.
Kevin, I agree with Mr. Phillips. We definitely need a traffic signal.
Yes, sir.
At that intersection, because he's right. Those trucks just bully their way. And once they get the cab by, they don't care about the trailer. You don't stop for that trailer. They're trying to get on forty-one out of the Love's truck stop. You got trucks trying to get out of two thirty-eight, and it's a busy intersection right there. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Got a motion. Commissioner Phillips, saying goodbye to Commissioner Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. My final item for consideration is an added item on the agenda, as imagine everybody is, look, if the weatherman's right, we're looking at some pretty inclement weather over the weekend. Dale Williams always said, you know, you prepare for the worst, pray for the best. So Monday, I had my guys at the sign shop. We constructed seventy-two signs, put them at thirty-four locations, and we completed installation of that today. You know, safety person, careful bridge, might ice over. We got those installed today. In an effort to repair it, I have put staff on standby for the Christmas holiday. What I'm here tonight, today, are denied is to say that we are ready in the event that we have to go to work. I'm requesting permission. Thanks. We do not have a sand distributor. What basically that is, if you can imagine a fertilizer distributor, some dump truck converted to all sand that will distribute sand on the back. So we do not own one of those. We do have a current contract with Mr. Boone, Jimmy Boone contract, and he does not own one. We wrote the works of contract. I'll take guilt. Never thought about everything icing over. But that being said, Jimmy does not have one. I reached out to Anderson Columbia. They've agreed to rent us if needed. Hopefully, none of this is needed. Sand truck with a driver for one hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. I also reached out to Acme up down Jacksonville. They're willing to lease us a truck with a driver. We call it an attenuator truck. And what that truck is, is a large truck with a crash cushion on the back. So in an effort to save a lot of time and whatnot like that, you just go, it's set up lane closure. We have to go out there Saturday evening, sand thirty-four locations in the county. It's a rolling lane closure, for lack of a better word, if that makes sense. So they are requesting five hundred dollars an hour for that attenuator truck and the driver. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting, and obviously, this is not a normal situation, and I had to act pretty quick if we're going to be ready. So I'm requesting a motion for approval to enter the agreement with Anderson Columbia Company for one hundred eighty-five dollars an hour for the sand distributor with a driver, five hundred dollars an hour with Acme or the attenuator truck.
Mr. Kirby, this money come out of the Public Works Fund?
Yes, sir.
Do you have the money to cover that in Public Works?
I hope so. Yes, sir.
I'm just saying, I know. I'm just asking. You don't need a budget amendment or anything for this.
No, sir. I'll get the bridge deck set. Yes, sir.
Because I know you're going to have employees working Christmas Day and all. See, that's double time.
Yes, sir. We're fortunate enough. We usually, we figured that out somehow. Yes, we looked into that.
I mean, it's going to be an expensive project.
Isn't this the second Christmas in a row?
No, sir. I think we've been lucky.
Year before last.
Right. Usually get a good old tornado, good old...
Yeah, year before last, we had that storm.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
When are you going to put them on the clock, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
When are you going to put these stand-by trucks on the clock?
Well, I'm not. I got a four... You're referring to the contractual trucks? No, sir. The way the agreement, if approved, the agreement that I got with the company's now, I will give them four-hour notice.
Okay, so they're ready to go within an hour, what you're saying?
If we don't have to mobilize this four hours, this does not cost us a dollar. If we get phone calls, so, folks, whatever, common sense, I'll probably take a look at them myself, a few of them. If we see we need to mobilize, we are ready. That is the bottom line. I just need more approval for these emergency purchases, emergency agreements.
Motion. Move to adopt a recommendation from the Public Works Director.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? The opposed motion carries.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Mr. Craps?
Thank you very much. I have a few items. The first one is memorandum of agreement with the Swanee River Water Management District. This is for the North Florida Mega Industrial Park Wastewater Treatment Plant. As you know, after we designed the plant, the BMAPs changed, and so the requirements for water treatment, wastewater treatment, changed. This is a grant that will give us the funds. We've already modified the design to install advanced wastewater treatment at the new plant as we're building it, so that it will meet current nitrogen removal levels required by the BMAP.
Any discussion? Any motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve it because it's something that we have to do if we're going to get our project going on.
Second.
I'll agree. Anytime we can get a grant money, I'm all for accepting it. So got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
And I should mention that the guaranteed maximum price that's been provided by our construction manager for the plant includes this, so it will not add to the total cost of the plant. We've already accounted for that. The next item is the Emergency Home Repair Program Amendment with the city of Lake City. The city of Lake City, on November twenty-first, adopted Resolution twenty twenty-two one twenty-seven of the city that basically amends the interlocal agreement we have with them to administer their Emergency Home Repair Grant Program in the same fashion that we administer our Emergency Home Repair Grant Program. The amendment specifically is to add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the program with an impending additional two fifty, should they get additional ARPA funds. If you approve this, you just add more money to the kitty.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Doing a similar thing on the Emergency Home Repair Program. We have bid number twenty twenty-two HH. That is for group three. Remember, as we do these homes, we do them in chunks so that they can be done quickly according to schedule rather than overwhelming contractors and giving them so much work that they can't get the work done. So we try and do them in groups and give them ninety to a hundred and twenty days to complete the work. There were six projects in group three, three of which, or we had three pre-qualified contractors that we reviewed to do this. We had two bids on this. The little bidder on all six homes is Patriot Response Group, so we're asking you to approve and award all six projects Patriot Response Group.
Motion. Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
The next item is carpet replacement or BA twenty-three eighteen. As you remember, when the tax collector and the property appraiser turned in their money at the end of their fiscal year, they said, you know, this is great. We appreciate all the work you're doing, but we really need new carpet. Their carpet was installed when the courthouse was remodeled approximately twenty years ago. The clerk has also expressed a desire for carpeting to be replaced in his offices. So we had basically turned in two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and three dollars from the tax collector. After you paid for the aerial photography for the property appraiser, we got back a hundred and ten thousand thirty-one. Basically, that three hundred and some odd thousand dollars is much more than the cost of replacing the carpet. As you can see, the bids that we got back for each of those offices, and basically, we used Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op so that we could just go ahead, select the vendor and go on. It's kind of like a piggybacking.
David, why would you not go ahead and replace the carpet in the POCC office at the time? All that carpet's the same age.
Quite frankly, yes, it is, and it is worn. We just typically, we work our plan, plan our work. It was not put in the capital projects, so therefore, we did not put it in. We didn't budget for it.
We didn't budget for this either.
Available for this.
We didn't budget for this either.
No, well, I mean, it's based on the money they gave back, yes. But that's why we didn't budget for it.
Is that a legal way to use the money? I mean, can we do that legally?
It's money returned to the county to spend however you appropriate it and deem public use. So yes, you could do all three. You could add the POCC offices at the same time. Obviously, there's plenty of money that the tax collector turned in to cover those costs.
To me, it doesn't make any sense. On one side of the annex building and the first floor, you're going to replace the carpet. You got the property appraiser across the hall from us on getting new carpet, but yet still, we get, keep the same carpet. It water stains from the leaks that we have had from the sprinkler system. I think that we should do the whole annex building, and I so moved, we do so, Mr. Chairman. Second.
I second that. I mean, you know, if you're going to do all part of it...
Well, I think we might need to approve this and bring back a bid to approve for the POCC office. Is that how you would do it?
Yeah, I think that's the issue. The stage you're at in procurement here is you have bids that have been solicited and received, and they're asking approval of that. If you want to go forward and expand it, then you just need to go through another procurement for the remainder of the building.
Commissioner Williams, if you could, make your motion to approve...
Commissioner Williams, if you could, make your motion to approve this tonight and have David bring back a bid at the next meeting for the BOCC office also.
They probably are going to piggyback off what they have now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. But I think we'll have to approve it.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For clarification purposes, it's not just the annex building, but also the clerk's offices in the courthouse, correct? Yeah, I just want to be sure for the clerk's minutes that it reflects, it includes the courthouse as well. Since we are using it through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, it would be the same unit price. Is that correct, Mr. Noel?
Good.
So you could add it as long as we went through that same purchasing co-op.
Could add it. But we could do Mr. Williams' motion like he put it.
You'd want to clarify the motion to say, replace the carpeting in the tax collector's office, in the property appraiser's office, in the clerk's office, and in the board of county commissioners.
I said annexed building, so that's everything's in the annexed building with carpet.
Because his offices are in the courthouse. I just want to make sure we're all in there.
Long as Jay doesn't pick out the color, I'm good.
Okay, we got a second.
Second.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries, David.
Thank you. The staff will appreciate the carpet.
Well, that carpet's like, it was done when the courthouse was remodeled, twenty what years ago?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago?
This is the BA, basically, as it looks like. We'll modify the BA. We may go ahead and stick the new BA on the next agenda to reflect the additional money needed, if we need to add it.
Okay.
To reflect the additional money needed. The next item is the Guardian Lightroom Lease Renewal. You provide office space for Guardian Lightroom offices. You rent space from Stanley Crawford. Done that for three years. The lease has expired. On discovery expired, we approached him for renewal to get through this fiscal year. So this is a lease renewal for one year to get us through September thirtieth of this fiscal year. There is a clause in there for the renewal for the rates to go up. Didn't increase the rates during the months that we've already expended, but he's going to increase the rates as of January one. The grand total for the whole thing will be about forty-four thousand four fifty-seven to provide lease space for Guardian Lightroom.
Got a motion?
Motion. So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
David, before we move on, just as food to thought, next year's budget process, I think we need to send this out for an RFP because when you look at the square footage prices, it's definitely getting to the point where it exceeds what we're already paying for TDC, ECO, and Superbad Elections, so.
Absolutely. And in addition, hopefully, we will be able to find office space. But we won't have to lease space in the future if we go towards financing.
I know we got a lot going on, I just don't want that to go on the back burner and just miss the next budget cycle, so.
Absolutely. Make sure we send that out. The next item is BA twenty-three-fifteen, which is Emergency Tower Repairs and Upgrades. There is a tower at the sheriff's office, it is in the flight path of the airport. It has beacon lights on it. The FAA requires us to have so the airplanes don't hit it. Beacon light went out, they stopped working. So this, we had to fix it. You just don't have a choice. So this is to cover the emergency repairs to the tower at the sheriff's office for the beacon lights and some additional money to upgrade the service monitors for the radio system so that we don't have to go out and touch every radio. If upgrade changes, we can do it from the office. We're asking for BA to move money from cash balance forward to non-capital equipment, forty-eight thousand. Money in cash balance forward comes from last year. We have our annual maintenance contract with Motorola. They did not pull the maintenance last year, so we did not pay the maintenance last year. So we had this hundred thousand dollars roll into fund balance. Because those services are funded again in this year's budget, so it wouldn't be made up. So we're basically taking money not expended last year, putting it into this year to cover these emergency repairs.
Can you say Motorola did not do the maintenance on that tower last year, or?
Not on that tower, just period. They have a schedule to do maintenance because of things that was going on with the system. They did not pull the maintenance last year on the system, the radio system. That money was not expended. So we're going to use the money that wasn't expended to pay for the emergency tower repairs and the upgrades to the.
Motion.
Adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
The next item is Tourist Development Council Reappointment. Basically, it's a four-year term. You've got to be in the tourism business, but this particular position can't be a hotelier, RV park or something like that. Mr. Kandler's been serving. He's only served one term. You're allowed more than one term. He meets our policy, and so they would like to reappoint him to the TDC for one more four-year term.
I'll make a motion, we'll reappoint Mr. Kandler for four more years.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
The next item is a fun one, Economic Development Incentive for U.S. Cold Storage. And the folks from U.S. Cold Storage is here. If you have any questions for them, they'll be happy to. They also have a presentation. If you want to learn more about their expansion. But they've expanded several times since they came here. They have been a company that moved Columbia County and have spent, I think this is the fourth expansion, fifth expansion? The fourth expansion. If you remember, the last one, they added the rail spur in. This is actually adding more space, adding automation, creating just a whole new area, and adding jobs. They will be adding more jobs. As such, they went to the EDAB and said, we'd like to get a tax abatement for this phase. It's seventy-five, what was recommended based on the scorecard that's been around is seventy-five percent of the property tax and fifty percent of the intangible property tax, tangible property tax, rather, for eight years. Based on the number of jobs they create, the capital investment they're doing, and it was unanimously supported by the Economic Development Advisory Board. And recommendation to you is to approve the abatement.
And, boy, when you hear automation, you think it's going to cut jobs, but automation with them going to increase jobs. So that's one of the questions that was asked. If you go on automation, you're going to reduce to employee numbers, but they're going to add employee based on the automation that they have there.
They're getting rid of the manual labor and making it a more skilled labor position.
And that's not adding the big trucks out there that's buying fuel somewhere here. And the truck drivers is getting paid to drive those trucks to haul french fries. He said he hauls eighteen thousand pallets of french fries a month. What you said?
Would you like to hear from Cold Storage?
Yeah, they can get up here. I'm talking to hear Paul. Come on, Paul, talk. I know you didn't prepare for this, but you'll get me back. You'll get me back.
Quick story, I think most of you already know it. I mean, basically, they built the facility, a greenfield build in two thousand eight. Probably had, I came six months after it opened, we had maybe twenty-five people working there at the most. In two thousand thirteen, we were full, probably had about fifty, sixty people working there. We built Phase Two, which was just about double the size of the facility. And then recently, we were able to put the, we've been trying to get the railroad in from day one. CSX owned the track, and they sold it to a local short line, which opportunity came knocking at our door and said, hey, we can build the spur. And we spent like, I'm going to guess, probably about half of what it would have cost with CSX, so. That came back, we just got it started. We started unloading rail cars December the first. This is real, real big business. I mean, we're going to probably end up somewhere around eight cars per day or forty cars per week. And they hold equivalent of three tractor trailers. The one rail car has about three tractor trailers. That's come all the way from Idaho or whatever. So it's a long trip, but it saves the people a lot of money that are transported. So anyway, and so now our building's completely full, we have nowhere to put anything. And so, you know, if we can get this tax abatement and build our Phase Three, I think probably say three or four years from now, somebody else, I'll be retired, but somebody else will be standing here asking for something on Phase Four. We'll fill that up quickly. Add some good jobs with, when they talk about the automation, we're going to have some specialty equipment, which we are actually going to pay employees more money to operate that specialty equipment. Automation part is really just a feed. We're going to have something that feeds the pallets into a room from the rail dock and feeds the pallets out to the dock, go onto the trucks. So it's just really a feed. Then we'll have people using truck trucks inside the room, which that's like a forklift with a cab. And the guy sits in it, or girl sits in it, and they go up and down with the product in their aisles. But we can put more slots in there and use that to go up and down and bring it out, set it onto a conveyor, and it feeds out to the front. A lot of real exciting stuff. And this is going to be fairly complicated for us, but hopefully it all works out, and I'm excited, and the team there is excited. Good future stuff for U.S. Cold.
Well, didn't you tell me that you also had trucks bringing material in and shipping them out somewhere else? Did you tell me that?
We do have trucks.
Yeah, okay.
The customer came here thinking we were going to get that rail dock built last year. The contractor went south on us. We had to hire a new contractor, and all kind of stuff got messed up. Total nightmare. But the customer started trucking the product in, so we were actually doing the business. Now we've converted from less trucks to more rail cars. Then when we get the new building built, hopefully it'll be all rail cars or mostly rail cars. But a lot more trucks going out, just not the trucks bringing the product. Any other questions?
I just want to say we appreciate what you're doing out there and adding jobs. I know you, I go by there all the time. I can see you're growing every day.
We appreciate the support from the. Thank you.
I move to take your recommendation of the Economic Development Board.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, can I get a motion?
You don't even get it.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item is the Annual Financial Report and Reversion, twenty-one, twenty-two, from the Sheriff's Office. This is the Constitutional Officer's Financial Report. As you can see, he had ninety-six thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars in unused appropriations from the last fiscal year. But in addition to that, he's turning back in three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents in charges for services or reimbursement. Additionally, another hundred-and-eighty-three-one-thirty-two-sixty-five is miscellaneous revenues that he collected. And then finally, interest earnings of five thousand sixteen dollars, or grand total of he is turning back or has already turned back to the county, This is an annual process that we do. Having said that, we had talked to the legislative delegation about asking for another nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to finish out his crime scene building. Having said that, I wanted you to see what the crime scene building kind of looks like and the direction we're going. That's in addition to the two million dollars for the crime scene building. And then the sheriff is requesting of this money that he's turning back, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand be set aside for the evidence crime scene maintenance building. I know that, you know, we're asking the legislature to finish building the building, but this money needs to be set aside so we can outfit the building, put in the shelves, buy the crime scene equipment. If we need maintenance, mechanics, equipment in the shop, all this could be used for that if the board so chooses to set the money aside for that. So it would be used to outfit the building or any shortages that happen if the funding is just not enough to cover the actual construction. Building has been out to bid, not to bid, but to design. So it's been designed and the site work's been done. That's where we got the estimate on the cost of the building. In addition, Sheriff's Department wants to take the additional, the remaining money, three-hundred-thousand-two-fifty-seventy-four. He originally asked for it to be put on the animal shelter building. That has changed. He now has indicated that, you know, he's flexible on where the board would like to put that money. In November, he asked for BA for eighty-thousand dollars for the animal control sergeant and training. My recommendation would be you take that out of the money that he's reverting back to the county. Or, you know, he has unfilled positions. Over the years, he should be able to absorb that money. But the Sheriff's Department, basically, that's what he's requesting you do with the money. Having said that, up to the board.
Question?
I got a comment. I'm confused with the sergeant. When we first negotiated Act of Sheriff to would he be willing to take over animal control, he presented us a budget that was fully staffed with a sergeant and the workers. Was in the original proposal that he gave us. Now, come November, asking for another eighty-thousand dollars for the same position that was already funded in his staffing that he gave this board when this board agreed by a four-to-one vote to give him animal control. I don't see why it changed from the original request that was given to us on the staffing program, which included a sergeant, was included in the amount that he was asking for. And now here's another eighty-thousand dollars on top of the original request.
Ron's got a point, and I support it a hundred percent. That's kind of the conversation myself and David's had when he first approached me with it, but.
David, am I correct, wasn't that part of the proposal that was given to this board, fully staffed proposal? Include a sergeant and the workers that works under the sergeant?
During the budget, we believe, the sheriff told us.
No, ain't no believe, David. Don't come here, short-talking now.
During the budget, the sheriff basically said that animal control was covered in his budget. Now he says only the capital part was covered in his budget, not the personnel part. When he presented it, was, animal control was covered in his budget. In addition, like I said, you know, he's... Nobody has ever fully staffed one-hundred percent, one-hundred percent of the year. I believe there are funds available that could cover the eighty-eight thousand in the existing budget.
Can I get a motion to?
I'm going to make a motion to set aside the three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand for the evidence crime scene building and continue with the nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand legislative request.
Second.
I second that one.
We've got a motion and a second on the six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand. Basically, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven going to go toward the build, the crime scene building.
That's it.
Three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand.
Yeah. And the budget amendment at this time, we're going to hold off on that, is that what you think?
It's not a my, it's not, not a my motion, correct.
And Commissioner Williams, that's what you understand, you seconded, right?
Right.
And you seconded that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
See the sheriff back here.
I just want to be, make sure I understand this perfectly clear. The six-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, I asked for the three-sixty-seven to go towards the crime scene building so that we can finish the building out and not just have to do the shell. Okay, that's the motion. The three-hundred-thousand, I wanted that to go back initially, we were looking towards the animal control side of it. There's a lot of bone of contention about that. I said, I didn't, you know, that's y'all's discretion. If you want to use it for animal control, that's the board's discretion, the three-hundred-thousand. Y'all can put it into your capital projects, do whatever you want with it. As far as, when we finished up the budget this year, I will challenge you to show me where you could take the three-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, is what would have been left over to fund the animal control. You show me where you put that in my budget. Now, I'm a little offended by this. Because when we sat up here, when we had discussion, we go back to the meetings that we had, the animal control, you guys were funding Humane Society, and I believe it was four-hundred-and... the animal control, you guys were funding Humane Society, and I believe it was four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. I, I didn't know this was gonna be a bone of contention tonight, but I'd be glad to circle back up after first year, and we can talk about animal control. But my understanding was that you funded my budget. I was not gonna take any money from the board, with the exception of capital outlay money, which was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Hundred and twenty-six initially, then it was a hundred and tw- a hundred and twenty-eight. Two thousand was added, uh, for some other equipment. And then, as I got stood up, because we said this was gonna be a year-long project, as I got stood up, because I have to go through the process of selecting the individual through our promotional process and our selection process at the Sheriff's Office. We were gonna take the hundred and twenty-eight, buy the trucks, because those are such a long lead time on them. We had to buy the dart guns, the catch poles, all the, all the stuff. We were gonna start getting that in. Building was gonna be, uh, taken care of, or you guys were gonna do the, uh, the, do the building maintenance or the building construction and all that. As I got that position tagged, I was gonna come back to you guys to ask for the, the funding to fund that position. That was not in my rid- my approved budget of twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. So, and I, I'd be glad to sit down with any one of you. If you want to come out, I'll be glad to sit down and show you how we, we appropriated that money or how we, we executed on those dollars that were sent to me for personal services. But my understanding is, is y'all are gonna give me the three sixty-seven in order to finish out the building. You guys will take the three hundred thousand, and you do what, what, that's your discretion. I mean, that's y'all's discretion. And I thank you for doing that, because this crime scene building is something we've been needing for a long time. Okay?
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, I'd like to come out and see you about that. I want to sit down and look at that.
Mr. Sheriff, I think you were midway through taking your votes.
Yeah, I had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, David, you want to go ahead and discuss the Leary Firefighters Foundation grant and emergency repairs? Before we go to number twenty?
Sure. Uh, the emergency repairs, as you remember, we need to do an emergency repair on the well system at the Southside Community, Southside Sports Center. Work was done because the well failed, it had to be done. We discussed it. Apparently, the documentation wasn't completely accurate. We've worked with the clerk's office to cut the check, but the check cannot be released until we have a physical vote that says we approve the expenditure of the money. So we're requesting the board of county commissioners vote to release the money, release the check that has been cut by the clerk.
I'll make a motion that we approve this, uh, emergency repair.
Second. What was it about again, please?
Kevin, do you remember what the amount was?
Uh, sixty, sixty, sixty-eight, nine. I got it. I'm sorry, I didn't see it back here.
Again, we submitted all the paperwork, the checks can cut. Clerk's office informed us if you can't release the check, they'll have documentation of the board vote.
And that will, that will, if I'm, runs irrigation and all that stuff out there also, but-
Yes.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, light sign? Motion carries.
And in terms of the firefighter grant, um, basically, we got it this week. Otherwise, it would have been on the agenda, but it says it has to be signed by the thirtieth. That's why we're walking it onto the agenda. It is a grant that has been awarded to the fire department for the purchase of, uh, thermal imaging cameras. Ever seen the fire department's use of thermal imaging cameras? It allows them to see where the hot spots are during a fire. It allows them to see where people are, perform fire and rescue stuff. It's really, really very valuable, important stuff. By having grant funded, we don't have to pay for replacement sets, and so we're asking you to approve the grant and approve the execution of the-
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, light sign? Motion carries.
And then the last item on the agenda for me is the update of the Richardson Community Center. I was asked to place this on the agenda. Uh, before I turn it over, I just wanted to say, uh, currently, we're in the process of recruiting for the gym attendants and for the center program coordinator. We expect to begin interviews in January. Hopefully, have all those on board by the end of the month, into January, beginning of February. We also are planning to open registration for basketball league play, which is now a county function. In January, they'll be taking reservations, they'll form the leagues. Probably the play itself will begin in about March. We've got a lot of administrative work that we've got to do in the month of January to get the registrations, to get the people registered, coordinate it, and to make it work, and we want to make it work as successfully as it has been in the past. This will be a county thing, and at some point, it will be paid for. You set aside in the budget every year fifteen thousand dollars for basketball. Since the center no longer provides basketball, that's the money that we'll use to fund basketball, league program, and any basketball tournaments that we have. So in your budget, you set aside fifteen thousand dollars for basketball. Uh, having said that, we're working on the community center transition. We met with the community center and with Mario and with, um, county staff and Amy. Amy was there to talk about any issues that were outstanding in the transition between going from the way the center used to be run to the new contract we have where we provide recreation, they provide community center. There's enough separation, you could drive a truck through it, as Commissioner Williams said. There were some issues, we worked through them. Any issues that were outstanding, we had the county attorney clarify, and I think we're on a really healthy path as long as we continue that clarification and communication. One issue was, two-fold, there's a couple issues. One is, we decided, because of the timing, it would be best, it's the county contract with the pickleball people and the community center, to do the pickleball tournament that occurs January sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
That weekend, fourteenth. There's just not enough time for us to learn procedures and do it. After that, we will then do the tournaments. It will be a county function. Uh, the other thing is, we want to go, come back to the board at some point with a contract between us and the community center, where we're contracting the community center to provide the gate and concessions on league play and on tournaments. Reason being is, we don't have the staff, we don't have, uh, the ability. The money generated, and they will have to keep records and turn the records into us, will be generated, will be used to create scholarships. They will then award the scholarships and cut us a check for the, um, registration fees to those people they choose to give a scholarship to. So the county won't be picking who gets the scholarships. That'll be the community center. And it, they'll come to us and say, we have these kids that we want to give a scholarship to, write us a check with that list. And the way they're gonna fund it is through the gates, through the concession stand. We'll decide if there's gonna be a proration or not a proration to the county on that. But we just feel it's better for the county if we let them do that as a way to make money for the scholarship program. Because there's a lot of kids that can't afford the cost of football, the cost of basketball, and this way, we can get them into participating in the program. It's really a way to help the community and the kids. Finally, uh, the city was not, city did not provide us a written response on Commissioner Hollingsworth's letter. They indicated, made comments during the meeting that they have no intention of changing the way things are going, but they did not issue a written response. Having said that, sort of related, we had a teams meeting with the state, the EO, and the city on December sixteenth to discuss the community development CV grant, which is a thing that they're trying to complete for the transition of the property to the county. Um, and we're also trying to develop an interlocal agreement to help, to have the county help administer the city grant, but it is a city grant, it's not a county grant. So, um, city plans to approve that grant agreement on January third. It apparently was originally submitted back in September, but for whatever reason, did not get to the city. And so they did not realize it was there. So once we provided it, um, they put it on their agenda for the third to be executed, so the grant can start. There's some problems with the grant, and I'll explain that. We know the grant is gonna have to be modified with the performance of the scope of work and with the, um, data performance. Because in talking with DEO, they said, right now, you gotta complete the grant by Sep- September of twenty twenty-three. Physically impossible for any of us to do that. City cannot do it, we couldn't do it, nobody could do it. Because the way CDBG grants are, as you know from experience, you gotta design it, and you're gonna have to hire an engineer, you're gonna have to do an RFP to select the engineer. You're gonna have to conduct an environmental review, which usually takes six to eight months. You're gonna have to do an RFP to select the firm to do the environmental review, unless you want to pay for it without grant funds. So, DEO realizes that September thirty, that September date is impossible to meet. They claim right now they can't change it because HUD won't let them change it, but they think at some point HUD will allow them to change it and will be able to do the modification. The other reason I said there needs to be a modification, we all know the costs have increased. This grant was originally submitted when Joe Helfenberger was city manager. It was what, two years ago? All know the costs have escalated, two million dollar grant. It's not gonna go as far as what they proposed in the application. When the grant contract was written, it was written very broadly. So it says, the contract is to go for HVAC at the Richardson Center and touchless, uh, fixtures, like in the kitchen and in the bathroom, so you don't have to touch them. Again, it's a COVID grant, so they were trying to restrict the amount of contact that people would have to transmit the disease, that we could do testing or vaccination in the center if we needed to. But the bulk of this grant really goes towards sidewalks, streetlights, pairs, things that make the center more easily accessible from the community. So because of that, we met this week with the city to walk the center and walk the community so they can, they can get an idea of where it is they feel they can best spend the bulk of that two million dollars. Having said that, um, and they're looking at that right now. And again, this is a HUD grant, so it will be required to meet all CDBG requirements. Having said that, there's two other issues. If you have to do the environmental assessment, environmental review, which you have to, because it's a HUD program, you cannot disturb the project site until they accept the results of the environmental review. Which means, once the city gets into this grant, you can't dig dirt, can't change the physical facility until the environmental review is completed or you void the grant. That's gonna be an issue.
Okay, let me ask you this. When does that, when does that start, from now?
That will start the minute the grant, agreement is executed. So the city will vote it on it, uh, the third, they'll send it back to the state. If the state's good, they should get it back by February first. That would then start the process of selecting the firm through an RFP, because it has to be through an RFP, to conduct the environmental assessment, unless either the city or county wants to pay for it outside of the grant. Figure the RFP is about a two-month process, right, Mike? And then you've got six to eight months, of which you're doing the environmental assessment where you can't do anything.
Okay. You know that we have projects slated there for this year. Is that, would that hold those projects up?
You would, it very possibly could hold those projects up.
Because we're gonna have to stir dirt to do what we want to do there. You understand what I'm saying?
Right, you cannot disturb the project site until the environmental assessment is done per HUD regulations.
You cannot disturb the ground or this scope of work or the scope of work that we've already-
Any scope of work. You can't touch the ground period during that period.
The project site until the environmental review is complete. So like when we did the truck stop in Ellisville?
Okay.
They wanted to go down there and they wanted to degrade the land. I'd say, uh-uh, you degrade it before we get the agreement started, or you wait until the environmental review is done. You can't do it during that environmental review period.
And that environmental review period would start in approximately March, maybe, and go through?
Yeah.
Big up to eight months.
So that might put off projects that we have at Richardson?
If you disturb the project site-
Well, I mean-
You invalidate the grant.
Works gonna disturb the project site.
Two million dollar grant.
Lights aren't mounted in the high, high sky. I mean, they're gonna be-
You have to dig holes to put in lights. If you can't get it done before February, it's not gonna get done.
Okay. Well, that, are, are you done, mister?
No, the one other thing is, we talked about the ownership of the complex. And we, we sent them a copy of the interlocal agreement we have with the city where they said they're gonna donate, they're gonna deed the property to the county upon the completion of the grant, and that the county is committed to retaining it in, for moving forward as a recreation facility as was intended. And we asked them about that, and they said, because this is kind of a city-county thing, because we operate the facility, they own the land, ultimately, we're gonna get the land, we're gonna continue it, it's the purpose that HUD intended it to be used for. They have no issues with the city proceeding with deeding us the land today, and it really wouldn't affect the grant.
Okay, all right, well, I had a concern about that, so. So they don't have any problem with deeding us the property?
That's what they told us. Obviously, they're on vacation now.
And that's on their, and I heard that's on their next agenda.
That, um, on their next agenda is the grant, the third. I don't know if they're talking about anything else, but I do know on the third would be to approve the grant with HUD.
So how do we encourage them to deed the property to us? Do we, do we need to be, how do we do that, other than just asking them?
That would be the board's call.
I say-
We could send them a letter?
I say it plays itself-
Well, we, we sent-
I say it plays itself out, because you can't do anything for approximately eight months. If you, if you're not gonna have the environmental assessment done until February, it could take up to eight months. You're talking about almost ten months. You can't do anything. So it plays itself out.
They have a, a process, it's called a C E N S T process. Uh, it's a certification of those elements of the grant that would not affect the environmental review. Those elements are design, engineering, environmental review, the paperwork stuff. So you can get a CES clearing to do all the paperwork stuff, hire the engineer to do the design work, do all that stuff. You just can't disturb the property.
And let me ask you this, can they deed us the property? How long would it take them to deed the property, physically?
That would be a Joel question.
Joel, how long would it take?
Uh, those title examinations have been done for months. It's really just a matter of scheduling. It's, it's not a complicated process.
As a commissioner, I, I would ask the chairman, if he would, to please write them a letter and make it very crystal clear what you're asking for, because my letter was-
I think we make a motion tonight to have David contact the city to request him to go ahead and send us a deed over to-
I'll make that motion.
And deed the county, the, uh-
I make a motion.
There's no reason to hold on to it, because-
There's no reason.
You just said the grant is accessible either way. Is that right?
My, my motion was gonna be different, but granted with what we got going on now that I didn't know about, my motion, I make a motion that we get the chairman to write a letter very plainly stating that we want to go ahead and execute the deed, because we're spending money there every day. And, and, and spend money all over the place, but this is the only place I know we don't own the property we're spending and all. And I have people in my district, I'm sure other people do, that say, why are you, well, Mr. Mr. Williams made this place a wonderful place from two thousand eight to now, and I just feel like we need to deed to the property that we are spending money on. Whether we do another, anything else, we need that, uh, before we spend any money, you know, except for running it, so. So, I, I, I would ask that you write a letter and let's see what happens and what comes back. And I, I hope that what comes back is, yeah, we're ready to do it.
I second that motion for a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chairman, we spend money, if we look at our budget, over a third of our budget, we spend money on, on things that we don't own. We've been doing this, we've been doing it for forty years. I don't buy that, that we spend money on something we don't own. Because if you look at the budget and go through a line item, you'll see all the things that we spend money on that we don't own. So that don't hold water in my book, if I'm supposed to speak. But, but, but the point is that it'll take eight months to ten months for the environmental assessment to be done before we turn any dirt whatsoever on anything. So that, with everything on hold until the environmental study is done. In between that time and now, we should be able to have a deed. Uh, I, I think Joel needs to be working with the city attorney on this, on this motion, as, as well as the, uh, as David and the, uh, and the city manager.
It, it sounds like it's a done, I mean, all they gotta do is issue the deed. I mean, it, it's, it's a two or three-day process, correct?
So if, if the board will recall, we previously ordered all the title work and had it ready to go, and we're basically told to hoe up while we were waiting for this grant to go through. And we've always operated on that, out of respect for the grant, you know, we won't do anything. And we just recently learned, or David learned, that the grant's not a problem. DEO can work with the county as surely as they'll work with the city, they've got no issue with it whatsoever. That's changed the game. So, if that's the case, and if they're still interested in giving the property over, we can go ahead and take it now.
That's, that's what my motion is. Let's just go ahead and ask them to do it and see what happens and see what comes back. That's my motion.
Mr. Chair, for the sake of clarity, that doesn't include repair and maintenance. We can still keep the facility up, maintain the facility, it's new development, new construction, that kind of...
Before we take a vote, I'd like for Joel to explain something. I just, I think everybody's aware of it. I just want to make sure. There's two parcels of property that encroach this parcel that we don't own, the city doesn't own, and we don't know what it's gonna cost, correct?
That is absolutely right, yes. And if you'll recall, we didn't move forward on those because we didn't own the rest of it.
Correct. So, even if we're deeded this, and we're just gonna say for giggles, the part that encroaches on the softball field that pretty, that comes pretty deep into this parcel of property, would I say some grandkid from 50 years back says, I want 300 grand for it? Where are we at there?
Uh, 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 uh...
And then there's another, there's another piece.
Mr. Murphy, you, you're fantasizing now. Those little strips of land out there isn't worth, you're hunting some odd thousand dollars they want for that piece of property that wasn't zoned right, or they thought it was zoned right. You're talking about two little slices of property that come in there, and there's no way that you're gonna be paying 300,000 dollars for it.
And I, Ron, I'm, I'm just using an example, but...
You have the power of eminent domain.
We have eminent, okay.
Ultimately, that's the, that's your final trump card is you with eminent domain that property to consolidate.
Okay.
And we don't even know whether the people that own the property are not gonna donate it to us.
Right.
No, that, that would be, I understand your question, Commissioner Murphy, that would be your endgame.
Okay.
I've got a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Yeah, I second that motion. Yeah. I second that motion, yeah.
Okay. So, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Light side? Motion carries. So, David, I guess, do I need to get with you and me and you'll draft a letter to the city? I mean...
We'll get with me, you, and Joel.
Yeah, me and Joel, okay. And, and I want to just add, I watched that meeting with the city. I took exception to the way they made a joke out of this letter. I mean, I, that's the way I saw it anyway. I mean, I didn't appreciate it.
And they mentioned the lease. The lease is a moot point. The lease is gone. They said, oh, don't we have a lease? Yeah, we got a lease, but now we have a understanding that we're gonna own the property. The lease is really not something we need to speak about. It's, it's still 2028, and it's, it's, it's gonna be ours. I mean, they have a, we have an agreement for them to give it to us. That's not, the lease really isn't as a moot point. So, I appreciate it, and I hope that they, they come back with an answer for us.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Thank you. We'll do two-minute comments at this time? Come on up.
Three minutes.
Three-minute comments. I'm sorry. We went to three minutes. That's all.
Thank you. My name is River, and I was actually River Dana. I live in Lake City. And I was actually coming here pretty regularly a few months ago, and I know I kind of disappeared. I was coming up here talking about animal control issues, and so my absence was not because of reduced desire or passion on the subject. I just was in a car accident, fractured my ankle, and I totaled my car, and I got a new job, and I moved in a new apartment, and my friend passed away. It was just, everything kind of dumped on me at once. So, but I'm back. I wanted to just come by and say hi and remind you guys that I exist. The animal control thing is like, it's a big thing for me because it's not just me, it's like lots of other people in the community see this problem, for lack of a better word, or maybe oversight. There's definitely like oversight. For example, this was just a week and a half ago, I, there was two big dogs wandering around my neighborhood, and I watched them drag my neighbor's dog off the back porch around the front of the house, and they were gonna kill him, they were trying to kill him. I intervened and I saved the dog. I called animal control. And you have to leave a message, like nobody picks up. And so, I called the sheriff's office, and they couldn't help me either. The dispatcher said that there was nothing he could do, and it was, I just had to figure it out on my own. And I've seen those dogs, they're still in the neighborhood, and like, what if they go after somebody's child? And like, things like this happen. That's just one example, and things like this happen a lot, and it's not just me, it's friends in other parts of the town. So, what I had been coming here a couple of months ago was I had some ideas, like some amendments to like county ordinances, like suggestions. I actually drafted one up for the county attorney, but I lost it in the move. And so, I'm, I'm back. I just wanted to say, hey, and Merry Christmas, and I'm gonna be working on some stuff. I was talking to David, getting on the agenda and like making a slideshow. So, I look forward to seeing you guys in the upcoming months. So, I just wanted to say hi and that I'm back. Merry Christmas.
And you probably weren't here, River, in the last couple of years, when we've been trying, we know that animal control is not what it should be. I do. I know it. And that's why we're trying to get the sheriff to take it over, because that's how they do it in most counties. We're trying to do something efficient, whether he does it or who does it, we have to do better.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with you completely. I've, I'm scared to death somebody's gonna get bit. We've had that happen. Animal control is a very serious situation because I don't want a child being hurt. But I appreciate you coming up.
It, it was very traumatizing seeing them attack the dog. I couldn't imagine how I felt if it would have been a child that they were doing that too, so...
I agree.
But thank you.
Good. I've got one question for you. Did animal control ever reach back? Did you ever, did they ever contact you after that?
No, sir. I left a message with all the information that they asked, and, I mean, it's been almost two weeks and nobody's contacted me. I did contact them a few days ago. I found a severely malnourished and abused dog that was living underneath a trailer, and I couldn't tell if someone shot her or if she'd been in a fight. She had wounds all over her face, and she's in really bad shape. I've been taking her food, but I, I called animal control, left the message, the address of where the dog was, and it says on their voicemail that someone will get back to you, but that was like four days ago, and nobody's gotten back to me.
That's nothing, nothing new.
David, if you would, first question I'll ask, can you, we said, we passed this budget, can you rescind the appropriations that we give to animal control and Humane Society?
There are terms within the contract that would dictate that.
I would simply ask myself, if you would check into this very incident, get this young lady about the dates and do a follow-up, because if so, you know, they, they, as the sheriff just pointed out, we, we just give them a lot of money, and, and they're out there to do one cause, and that's to be a no-kill facility. But, but they're, they're gonna turn their back to a young lady like this that, you know, this is what we've been dealing with the six years I've been here? So, I, I, I'm waiting for that report to come back, and, and I'll tell the public and everything. If it comes back, as I'm suspected, I'm for killing our agreement with them right now. And I would hope this board would support that.
It just don't seem to get any better, does it?
I'm telling y'all...
You can't, you can't, you can't fix this problem with money.
A little kid is gonna get eat up in this county.
Yep.
I'm telling you that's gonna happen. I don't want it to happen, and I pray to God it doesn't happen. But we have had older ladies, we have all kind of people that have been attacked, and, and it's like, we, we can't get anybody to respond and do anything. That's why I say it's so much important to get it to the sheriff. And, you know, I don't know what to do about it, but I know, I wish, I don't know, I don't know how we can...
Ma'am, if you don't mind, before you leave, if you would get with our city county manager, I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't mean to do that to you. Give it our county manager and get your contact.
I've got her information.
Okay, you got her contact. Okay, thank you.
Just put your phone number on here. Do you know, do you have the record on your phone where you called them? Okay. We'd like to have all that, and that way we don't have any, well, something happened, sky was falling or something. We need to know what was going on. Because this is serious.
Phone on, right, give it, David.
Dog attacking another dog, attacking anybody.
My name is Stephanie McDonald, and I live at 569 Northwest Car Court in Lake City, Florida. I'm here tonight to ask the board's assistance in looking into the public events that are being held at the Dixie Cattle Ranch located at 674 Northwest Car Court here in Lake City. The ranch is located at the end of a half-mile road in a small residential neighborhood. In 2019, the ranch held its first public cow show called the Dixie Cattle Invitational and was open to individuals from all over the country looking to show their steers, their steers and heifers. This event was turned into a series starting in 2020. This held five public events each year since then. The road that we live on is very peaceful road with 14 residential homes built on it. I personally have lived at the end of this road for over 40 years. It's a very low-traffic road. Each of these events had held by the ranch is either a two- or three-day event. Typically, the traffic will start coming in on a Thursday. Traffic starts at 4:30 in the morning and continues until approximately 2:00 AM at night. These events draw hundreds of participants, with each participant bringing in very large trucks and commercial-grade cattle trailers down this very small road. I have seen where the traffic is approximately over 1,000 vehicles going back and forth in just a single day. These vehicles speed up and down the road above the speed limit and have damaged property of the neighbors along the road. I'm sure if the road, if our road, when paved approximately 25 years ago, was built to withstand this traffic, this type of traffic, over the last few years, you can start to see the wear and tear on the road from where these heavy vehicles were coming in and out. After the events are over, there is trash alongside the road and in our yards where we are required to pick those up ourselves, ourselves. Many of the residents who live on the road are fed up and frustrated with all the traffic, noise, and trash that is generated from these events. I'm aware of at least two occasions where the sheriff department has been called to these events due to the traffic continuing extremely late at night. I know there have been several calls and emails made to the code enforcement office regarding the situation. At one point, the property owners were told that they had to pull permits for these events, they had to keep certain hours. At the next event, we know permits were not pulled, and their solution to the hours that they were supposed to keep was standing at the gate and opening it and closing it versus just closing the gate at night for the night. In addition, many people camp on-site during these events with generators running 24/7. The generators can be heard at our home over 600 feet away. Since 2016, when its ownership of the property changed, a very large pole barn has been erected, and per their Facebook page, they recently constructed restroom facilities for the participants to use. From the county's records website, neither structures had permits pulled or approved. With this land being zoned agricultural one...
Go ahead, you can give a few minutes, wrap it up.
With this land being zoned agricultural one, it does not meet the county's guideline restrictions on how the property should be used. Being that the participants are being charged to entry fees first to show their steers and heifers in competition, it appears that this is a business being run on a, on the side on a property that is not zoned to allow this type of operation. I'm tired of the excessive traffic and having to leave my home on weekends costing us money when they have these shows. I'm also unable, when I'm unable to leave the home during these events, I cannot enjoy the peace required in my home due to the loud noise of the traffic and generators. In closing, I would appreciate the board's diligence in looking into this mountain forest.
Thank you, ma'am. This is in my district, and I, I think, Mr. Kirby, can we speak to this? I don't, I've only had one complaint from a guy, and he, I think he was a participant, but I don't know what they were complaining about, but I guess we need to make sure that all the permits are being followed, or what, what, what can we do about this?
Yes, sir. We will obviously follow the process of everything mentioned here tonight. I have heard one other comment about this about a few months ago, and it caught me off guard, but I've heard one other comment, but never in this kind of detail.
Is this, this is an agriculture event, I mean, on agriculture property? Does that require any kind of...
We're gonna have to do an investigation, but based on what Mrs. McDonald is sharing, it's, it's more than just, again, based on what she's saying, it's more than just bringing cows out and moving them around and things like that. They're, they're doing an event.
I thought you were doing a show, a camp show.
And she said overnight camping and things. There's a lot of things I heard as you were talking that do involve special use permits.
They're bringing in vendors to sell products. They're bringing in people from multiple states over. They're holding a competition there, and they're, they're charging fees for these events. Then they're holding live, um, training and stuff, and they're charging fees for that as well.
And you said you reported that to code enforcement?
We have reported this to code enforcement. They came out and they were told, the property owners were told they had to pull permits, and that has not been followed. They were told they had to follow specific hours instead of closing the gates when they were told they had to. They just stand there and open and close all night long.
Do you know, if you spoke to Winston? Okay, I see Lance.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll check in.
We'll follow up on this.
Ma'am, ma'am, I want to give you, have you got a pin? I want to give you my phone number. 386-623-2765. I'm your commissioner. I know right where Carr Road, I know a lot of, I knew old man Carr that it's named after. I'd like to see what's going on, okay?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's McDonald, 569 Northwest Car Court. I just want to expand just one quick couple of things that my wife talked about. So, Stephanie's lived there for 40 years. I've lived there 20, over 25 years now since we got married. There are 14 residences on that parcel, on that entire stretch of road. That's all there is. And of those 14 residences, eight of them are seniors and retired and have been there for over 40 years, have lived there that long. So, just to give you a general idea, and I got photographs and videos I'd be more than glad to show you, I've also approached the landowner and spoke to him directly about this to try to resolve this without having to come to this point. Clearly, it didn't work. But in saying that, her, even their own, their own little social media page, there was also an article done in the Lake City Reporter about the amount of people and traffic that were out there. Look it up for yourself. But just on July the 19th, they had to make a social media post about people throwing the shavings that they use. I have no idea what they're used for, I guess for them to pee on or whatever. I don't know what they're used for in the cattle shows. I don't care. But they're throwing shavings over into the neighbor's yard, and they had to go clean that up. They even made a post about it. Then also on April the 29th, this, this was last year that I had called Winston and talked to him about it and begun the process after I'd already spoke to the landowner. But on April the 29th, they already knew that they needed to have permits and the gates would be locked, but they even make a post about a 17-hour day. Well, folks, if you open the gates up at 7:00, that's midnight, that you're, that you're finally, you're knocking it off. So, another issue is that it's not just the occasional car. These are one-ton trucks, and there are several two-and-a-half-ton trucks. That's the big 6,500, 7,500s, not quite the semis, but a big, heavy-duty truck that's going up and down that road as well. And all this is a half-mile little paved road. Also on, excuse me, I'm sorry. There was just one moment here. Just recently, I was here at the county commission meeting where y'all were having problems and issues with people just putting up a shed, dumping whatever on what. Well, I looked it up. There's no permits pulled for any kind of septic, but they show a picture of an outhouse that's been corrected on that, erected on that property, and all it is is just a little building that they just threw up. All that it is. I know a lot of you know him very, very well. I, one time I was related to him. I can't believe that he is disrespectful to the people that have been living on that road forever, and I hate that it's gotten to this point. And I'll be honest with you, I don't care what he does on his land until it approaches onto my piece. When I can't sleep at night, we got a problem. There's a reason why I live at the end of a dead-end road in the country. If I want to live on Highway 90 and listen to Highway 90, that's where I'd live. But I don't live there. So, my wife is, uh, is asking for some help on it, as am I. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Any else?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Stuart Scott. I'm the third district commander with the American Legion Department of Florida. We come to you tonight to ask a, a serious favor. And that is to, in your current ordinance for simulated gaming, it has impacted us greatly at the American Legion. Many of you may know, the American Legion was founded in 1919, where we became congressionally chartered in the United States through Code, uh, Title 36, Part B. That is a very specific code that allows us to have a 501(c)(19) exemption with the IRS. Within those founding walls of the, uh, American Legion, we fund a lot of programs through Americanism, through children and youth, as well as national security. Every year, we give testimony to the United States Congress, which we will do this coming March 1st. I will be in attendance of that, uh, hearing. What we have to report to the US Congress is what we do with our money at all of our 55 departments throughout the world, as well as how many hours we spend dedicated to our community. With that being said, the Department of Florida is one of 55. We have a little over 100,000 members in the state of Florida. Whereas at post 57 here in Columbia County, they have 1,000 of those members. During the simulated gaming, uh, ordinance that you guys put up and which we firmly agree with the reason why you erected that, that ordinance, we are not an outward-facing, uh, uh, business when it comes to gaming. We are not an outward, uh, the public cannot play at our post. Only our members are allowed to sit at those machines. There is strict guidelines that are handled within our walls at that location. In order to get into the room where those, those machines sit, you have to be a guest to even sit in that room, signed in by a member. You cannot play on these machines. Only our members are allowed to play. Therefore, $100,000 a year, we give back to this community. And then that money, I would say over 70% comes from those machines. So, we're asking that you exempt Title 36, US Code, Part B organizations exempt from any current and future ordinances prohibiting electronic vending, also known as simulated gaming devices.
Joe?
Yeah, what?
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
We won't do it.
It's a, it's a policy decision of this board, so when you prohibited them, right? And he's done a good job of addressing some of the public policy concerns that you had, which was the availability of the public and the public safety dynamic that was involved when the public were playing the games. What I believe he's explaining to you is that that's not the case at their facility and it can't be the case at their facility because of how they're structured. It's a policy decision for the five of you to make. And so, these gentlemen, I don't believe I spoke with you, I know I spoke with you last time, uh, did speak to us, uh, a couple meetings ago and asked what's the best way to get the board's attention and we advised them to come and speak to you and share this with you. If this is something that the board would like to consider, you obviously can't approve it tonight. You'll have to do an, an ordinance to amend the previous ordinance. But if that's something that you even want to consider, I would ask for you to give me direction to that efficacy.
We create an order and bring it back to you.
Second. I, I think the reason people are a little scared is we, we, the reason we got rid of those gaming devices is because we had so much crime around them and so many bad things happening. I can promise you that ain't gonna happen at the BFW.
We, we understand that. As, as the commander of the post, I assure you that it's not happening.
Yeah, yeah. Well, either one of us. Jay, if you, come on now.
I got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, select sign.
You'll be notified when, when we have, have the hearing.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. And I'll, I'll leave each of you a copy of the resolution that we passed and so that we, uh, we are membership-based, so it's the members that set for us to come speak.
We know you ain't telling a story.
We can rescind this also, right?
You can rescind this also. That's, y'all heard that, right?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and have a good holiday. Uh, uh, Mr. Attorney.
Go ahead. Thank you, sir. Oh, I apologize.
While we're taking care of the American Legion, uh, can we also, uh, make this same ordinance for the, uh, the, uh, BFW?
It, it would be in the, they are listed in that.
Okay.
There's only a handful of stations. That would be a patriotic organization.
Okay.
So, they would be in that as well. Purple Hearts, uh, Ghosts of Our Mothers, that age group. Eric, it's a very tight, as you said, you want to be able to drive a truck through it, can't do this one.
Okay. Yes. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
And we can just do the ordinance for both, is that?
I, I'll prepare it for the organizations that they indicate, the, the category of organizations. Before you gentlemen leave, I'd like to get your contact information, okay? Oh, you have it up there.
Um, anybody else? Too many comments? Come on up, Steve.
Okay, I'm Tammy Magstead. Live here in Lake City. Magstead. Okay, so I'm actually here for, to talk about some funds that were reserves from last year for the community center. It was 15,000 that was appropriated for basketball that we did not use and that it was stuck in reserve, reserves. So, I'm here to ask if that could be re-appropriated, trying to say the right words, to pickleball. What we're trying to do is re-line the courts outside that were originally tennis. And our board approved it, but then we have to ask you if that, if we can do that, because we want to have it be all pickleball on those courts. So, all the tennis courts are now at Young Park and they have nothing for pickleball there. So, we would like to see, that's why I'm here, to see if we can get that. And if the 15,000, if you appropriate that towards it, then we will take care of the rest of it and get it done ourselves. It's not like, well, the county will do it and all this. We're asking for the 15,000 to be moved that was original. I don't know if this makes sense. And then we would take care of it. So, that's what I'm asking for. David understands a little more, but I tried to say it right.
Mr. Chairman, what would happen is you appropriated specifically $15,000 for basketball. It was not expended, and so at the end of the fiscal year, it rolls to fund balance. You would have to appropriate from fund balance that 15,000. It would be a transfer to the community center specifically for matching funds for the restriping of the pickleball.
No movement, Chairman.
The motions are second. I, can we vote on this?
You're gonna need to do.
Bring this back for the board.
You're gonna need to do a budget amendment.
Yeah, you're gonna need to do a budget and bring this back for the board.
You can give David direction.
Uh, and, and I'm gonna go ahead and say it. I'm kind of leery about taking money away from youth sports cap and projects. It wasn't, it wasn't you.
Yeah, I know, but I, I, I don't mean, we was just talking about a while ago about kids that can't afford to sign up for these sports, sponsoring these kids. I'd rather see it go into a program scholarship for letting kids play sports to fund, fund their, I mean, I, I know football, for example. A kid, for what, tries to play football, it's about $300 cost for him to sign up for football. And it's, you know.
Well, pickleball is actually a sport, and I know it sounds funny because it's a brand-new sport. But we're just ready, fixing to do our seventh tournament here in a couple weeks. And we bring in like 125 people a year on that and they pay fees. And that's gonna be the county's next year. So, like, they pay a $30 registration fee and then that will next year go to the county. So, this is to.
Do you have any kind of price or drop on these, what it called?
Yes, sir. It was, originally, it was gonna cost like $10,000 and now it's gonna cost $16,500.
David, I would, I would, I would rather just, if you bring us up the back to look at. I don't think it's something we should decide at this meeting.
Can't take that financial action. But you can direct.
Mr. Magstead, are these the tennis courts that they just redone over there?
Yeah.
Can, can they, can people play tennis on those courts too, once you do all this?
No.
How does the, how does, does? Okay, okay. All right, because they all play probably at Young Park, okay? That's what I was worried about, displacing somebody else.
One other to look.
You been, Stu? We got to get, uh, I thought he, I thought you broke your leg. Don't break your leg, let me shoot you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's been a while. It's nice to see that you folks aren't made out of cardboard. You're very small on the screen. And I'd like to thank you for using the microphones tonight. I see everybody's using them. And I, I kind of think that has to do that we have the actual clerk of the court here tonight taking minutes. And he's the one, if you look at the county check, signs every check. So.
He's committed to doing it every night, every meeting.
For the money that you make, if he can't hear you, I presume he may dock you pay.
The honorable Jake Swisher.
That's right.
He really is the least dressed up he's ever been in his life. He dresses like that for bed.
Okay.
So, I want to feel really fat came up for two reasons. Uh, one is the rescheduling of the meetings, non-emergency issues. You know, every morning I wake up, I thank the great spirit that I'm born in America. How lucky we are. We could be in Ukraine today, not having a very merry Christmas. You go every eight miles or 10 miles, America reinvents itself. You have another county commission, another five guys, some county commissions actually have women on them. And, uh, they make the rules and go by their rules. You know, when I was researching today's article on the fiasco of the organization meeting, came across a memo that Mr. Foreman wrote, uh, three years ago. You know, as Mr. Foreman always uses the microphone. He wrote a memo and he made this suggestion, you may remember this, saying how to make motions and votes and yays and nays. And he said in the memo that if you do it, you're gonna get used to it. It'll be like second nature. But he actually said it in the memo and he was confident that you folks would do that, which he didn't. Maybe you could take a look at that memo and do the ayes and the nays and listen to Mr. Foreman's good advice there and try that again. I know people that wanted to be at the meeting tonight because it was last Thursday. No other county commission that I know of, Union County, I call it Swanee County, reschedules a meeting because the county commission is on a cruise, wants to go hunting. That's why there's five guys there. The senate doesn't cancel a meeting because two people can't show up. So, I would ask you to reconsider that. Thank you for using the microphones and, and, and think about that in the future. And I'd just like to wish you guys a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And a safe one. Get NIH bombs at the Cuba shortly while that and these guys over here. Everybody owes something to the veterans. And, uh, keeps everything safe. So, follow the rules. And, uh, maybe we'll all have a good new year. You see, it works when you follow the rules. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Can't know that in three minutes. Thank you. You, Ron, you got anything?
No, sir.
Just Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas to the board and everyone. Y'all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you guys for your service. Yeah, I say Merry Christmas to everybody and thank you guys for your.
Whoa, 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 whoa. This chair, I think Mr. Osteen was trying to.
Oh, wait a minute. Well, I asked anybody else. I didn't see anybody say that.
Uh, he tried to.
He didn't have his urinate hooked up.
Uh, Frank Osteen, I just brought some papers up here for consideration. I want to pass them out. And, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I certainly hope 2023 is a lot better than 2022.
Here, here.
And I appreciate this meeting being more of a business meeting tonight. It was December 1st.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Did I miss anybody? Okay. Let's go ahead.
I just was saying, thank these guys for their services. I spent my time there too and I appreciate what y'all done because I did it too. And I really appreciate all the comments, even Stu. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas and I appreciate the service. And real quick, uh, told David I'd do this. I attended a, a Fact Trust meeting last Friday in Tallahassee. I learned some really good things I was unaware of, our, our insurance, uh, what would you want to call her, David? Monitor. She visited Richardson Community Center and, uh, found some things and I've asked David if he could to reach out to her, being though it's a free service to us to come and review our buildings that we're responsible for. Because, uh, as myself and David was understanding, you know, we, we've been walking in and out of the community center over there and just miss simple things. And David, I guess, uh, she expressed that she had no problem doing that, correct?
Yeah, she was more than happy to come out anytime.
Good. But I, I, she, uh, she really appreciated working with Lisa and the staff, so, uh, it's a free service. Uh, I think we really need to take advantage of it because I think it'll save us money in the future. And, uh, we pay, you know, we're paying for it. Let's use it. Have, have a happy Christmas.
The commissioner's right. She comes out for free. She finds things that you pass by every day and never notice. She'll say, we need to take care of that.
Uh, just a very Merry Christmas and a happy and safe new year to everybody. Look forward to working with you next year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you guys very much.
Thank y'all. Mr. Kirby? Yes, sir. Merry Christmas. Move your, your German. Move your German.
Thank you. Wear your ice boots Saturday.